We're good.
Okay, being at hour nine o'clock, we will call our meeting for order. Roll call, please.
Bobbit.
Here.
Wrong.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Um, Max, would you lead us in prayer? I don't know where we're at on that, but...
Yes, nod your head. Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, dear Lord. We thank you for all the blessings that you've sowed upon us. We thank you for life, health, and strength in right use of our minds and bodies. We thank you for the rain that you've sent to replenish the earth. We thank you for the seed time and the harvests that we've experienced. We ask you, dear Lord, to watch over each, uh, member of each district and the members of the courthouse here as they come to serve the public. We ask that you help them, each member, to return home safely to their families. We ask that you be with the leaders of this country, help them to act laws that we can worship you freely, and give them guidance as they deal with the problems throughout the world. We ask you, dear Lord, to be with each one of us and help us in our struggles of life. We ask you to watch over us, guard and direct us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Kat, would you lead us in prayers, please?
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the Open Meeting Act.
Alrighty. Consider an act on the approval of the minutes from July sixteenth, twenty eighteen. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented?
I have none. Max is looking over.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. I'll second the motion.
Okay, so I move.
Wrong move. Hess seconded to approve the minutes from July sixteenth, twenty eighteen as presented. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Abstain.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, comments from the public on the below agenda items?
Uh, do you want me to comment now on the police report thing, or just wait till we get there?
No, we'll wait till we get there.
Okay, then I have none.
None? Okay. Item seven A, transfer appropriate appropriations. Do we have any?
I make them... Oh, that's appropriations, excuse me.
None. None?
Sorry.
Um, indigent citizen, Daniel Martin Smith cremation, the remains by Oklahoma cremation and funeral home LLC at the cost of four hundred dollars for ADA Young.
I had went up and talked to Steven Young. The family had come and asked us if we could help. Uh, Steven, we had at the meeting, we discussed that. And I was in contact with the cremation place down there and stuff. He's gonna do it for four hundred dollars, and we don't have to do no transportation or nothing.
That's why I put it before POs, 'cause we actually have already gotten the invoice from it, so it's in the PO.
Excellent.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, Steven was good with it. We put it on the agenda.
So, do we need a motion there on this?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, I move that we pay the, uh, the, uh, pay for the cremation of the remains of Daniel Martin Smith at a cost of four hundred dollars to...
Okay cremation.
Okay cremation and funeral home LLC.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, wrong move. Hess seconded to, to take care of the indigent citizens, Daniel Martin Smith, by the Okay Crematory and Funeral Home LLC at a cost of four hundred dollars. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Oh, as motion carried unanimously.
Before we move on that, um, ADA Young had also, we, we kinda asked him about that, and it sounds kinda weird, but we also may wanna go out for an annual bid to funeral homes for crematory services.
Well, here's the issue with that, though. Sometimes you'll get into transportation cost instead of using one that, like that one was in Oklahoma City rather than having them transported back here.
He also said that he thought the medical examiner kinda stepped out of turn on that by just sending it to somebody.
But when we found out and dug into it more, we found out that the medical examiner did reach out to the son. And the son is the one, they called him and told him that the remains was ready, or that body was ready to be removed. And they contacted this cremation funeral home to get him transferred over there. So, the son was aware.
I think we better lea... I really don't, I personally don't wanna go out for, uh, for that, because I think it's gonna depend where they are, you know. I evidently, I just kinda think that's...
Well, this is something that Steven and I discussed beforehand. If we got somebody up here a funeral home, Stinchworth did the other one for four hundred and fifty dollars, that they would have to go down and retrieve the body.
Okay.
And that would cost us more expense.
Yeah, I think...
Normally, we're gonna have this in, in the county probably, and that's what Steven was referring to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think Pat was.
Okay. Well, that's, and that's fine. I just, it was, it was on my mind, so I thought I'd bring it up.
Okay. Item C, purchase orders and travel claims.
I appreciate it.
Review of purchase orders and travel claims.
I make a motion to review.
Second.
Hess moved, wrong seconded, to review the payment of purchase orders and travel claims. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Oh, as motion carried unanimously.
And I believe just make sure that the two payments for those two affidavits that you brought in, did you see cross?
Yeah, I saw the fairgrounds one.
Okay, for, and then the Pioneer one as well.
I haven't seen the Pioneer one yet.
Pioneer Systems? It's here.
Yeah, nine hundred and some, or... I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. They went by it. It's a thicker deal.
I think, yeah, I should have a copy of that affidavit.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's it. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Did you see over the weekend that bill from AIP, or I mean, the one, the other one from Crossland?
Oh, yes, yes, I did.
So, we'll need to transfer next week or something.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll get with...
County general over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the forty-two.
No, we've got that.
They're sending the final billing.
Minus the retention.
So, we probably need to acknowledge that as the final bill and put it as a line item maybe?
Probably wouldn't hurt. They've still got some stuff to do, but it's way less money than the retention. And some of it's gonna get done this week, it sounds like.
Max?
Yes.
That was the diluted one, right?
Do what?
That was the diluted one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that was the second one that was...
Got you.
Being on vacation, so made me dive into the PO system a lot more. But I have a lot better understanding of it now and how the system... Holy moly.
Sometimes that stuff, it's more than you wanna know.
Yeah, but it was good. I needed to learn some of the things I learned, so... Well, and it wasn't, it was Jenna and I was, she did the majority of it, I think it was kinda doing the weird ones.
We have weird ones?
Yeah. I'm a weird one.
Okay, Cindy, this here's for groceries. All these are different, but they don't have a copy of the, of the tickets. It's just got...
Oh, the charge ticket?
Yeah, it just got charged. Is that?
I guess it has.
It should have a ticket.
Get the ticket, too.
It don't.
Is that sheriff?
Yeah.
I mean, if not, we can get it from the, but we need to hold that until we get that. So, let me buzz you and see if you have them or...
Okay. My other question was, is that's not a blanket. That's not a blanket, so how did they have multiple tickets on there unless they got it on one day?
Oh, yeah, that's true. I'll have to check on that.
Okay.
He usually does have a blanket for the grocery store.
Well, Alex, we may have just missed that it was a blanket. I mean, it was me and Jenna doing these, you know.
Oh, okay.
Not the normal person was doing the POs, so it probably was. We'll run it through. Well, and honestly, it shouldn't be paid until we get a co... an invoice from Moores. There's no invoice from Moores.
No, I know there isn't. That's what I was...
Well, does it not hurt?
There's usually a register deal. There's a register receipt deal on the back, but...
Do they not put a copy of the invoice with each PO?
Oh, here it is. Here it is. It's here. This is it. This is it. It, well, it's grocery... That's the way Moores does it. That's the way they do it. They don't put, unless it's meat. They'll put meat. Otherwise, they bought twelve something at five... This is their tape that comes out of the cash register.
Okay.
Groceries. They bought twelve of something at five forty-nine.
Yeah, it doesn't say like TV dinners.
TV dinners. If it's meat, it'll say meat.
Right.
But otherwise, it doesn't say like it's green beans or if it's...
So, it was just a regular PO and they just bought it?
Yeah, yeah, this is right.
And so, that's just the one time?
I don't know if we can tell Moores. I mean, I don't know how you do that, because usually when I personally go buy groceries, it'll say best choice, green beans or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
But this just says...
To be more detailed.
I think, I'm not positive, but I know like when they have meat that's aged.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll discount it, and I think they, you know.
Sell it.
Sell it cheaper than whatever is what there, but, um, you mi... I think it's okay, but you might just ask if we could get a better itemized deal of what the groceries are.
Well, yeah, 'cause that just says.
Groceries. I mean, it doesn't say like if it's meat, cheese, you know, or...
What department it comes out of. Do you wanna go ahead and run it through?
Yeah, I mean, we probably should.
I mean, it's the way, yeah.
If that's the way it is.
I'll find out.
Yeah, if we can get a better itemized receipt than that.
I don't know where that would be at.
Yeah.
Probably in sales tax. I'm not too sure. Yeah, like this one, it shows what they bought, like the dairy they bought.
Yeah, yeah.
Sharp and that groceries was water and crackers and non-food, I guess dishes and cherries, you know. That, that shows, that's more what we see.
What we need to see. And I wonder if it's because they did it like so many apps and did it as the discount and they just didn't hit the right department.
Yeah.
That may be. I, I just didn't see it on that deal filled out or anything.
The groceries, it just says groceries.
And I thought it was multiple.
I did, too, when you, after you handed it to me now, so, yeah. But it was, it was just all one day. I bet it probably was me or...
I think it's something they probably discounted, so...
You can value state cheaper than you can him, or at least...
Mm-hmm.
Um, should we maybe go back and, and also state that the remains are going to the son, they're not gonna be the responsibility of the county after that?
Probably so, yeah.
Okay, I just was thinking about that.
I didn't realize that was happening.
And this came out of our donation account, right? I don't know the number on that one.
We took it out of county general.
No, we got a special...
No, no, we took it out of contingent, or not contingency.
No, no, it comes out of that donation. Remember, we set up, it's a charity, charity, excuse me, charity.
Charity, but we did, I thought we said we didn't have any money.
There's no money in that charity account. Do you show any money in the charity?
Yeah, we oughta have that carried forward. We have twenty-five hundred in there, and then half of it would've been carried forward. Um...
Okay.
Yeah, we should.
Which we can change it. I mean, we'll...
It should come out of charity. Let's see.
We talked about that we were getting it. We were gonna make sure we had it in there for this next budget.
Let's see, this is, I think this is Punch Strong.
Yeah.
You what?
I think this is Punch Strong, you know. Can't follow, yeah, I can't follow the, it's Punch Strong, so it's, it... He's flipped. So, let me start at the front and work my way back. Let's see what we've got. Um, so it oughta be about... Charity, twenty-five hundred. So, so half of that, which is...
Twenty...
Oh, these are the old numbers, probably.
That's okay, though. Twenty-eight.
Charity.
See, that's probably one of the ones we have that need, one of our issues that we have, so, um... Let me just correct it. Let me, I'll get it corrected.
Maybe we need to hold it. If, if we don't have the money, we can't, we can't put a PO on it till we appropriate, if we, if for some reason it didn't get appropriated or moved. If it didn't, if we for some reason didn't move it, then we can't write, do a PO, so you probably better hold that till next week.
Okay, and then, okay.
So, to make sure, make sure that we've got that account set up.
Right, I'll, I'll check that.
What one's up?
It is set up?
As long as it's set up.
Cremations, paying that, kind of, or...
I don't know. I can't, I mean, I'll have to look.
Well, if we think it's set up, then we'll go ahead and run it through.
Yeah, and I'll just make sure, and if not, yeah, we can build it if not, 'cause, yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay, just put that and then I'll sign it. Yeah. Yeah, that should be charity. And you might have it set up, Cindy.
Yeah, I just...
I wouldn't doubt it if you did, yeah.
You just don't use it often enough, 'cause if you, when you transfer, build...
Well, we had to pay the other ones.
Well, that would've been last fiscal year.
Yeah.
I thought, well, yeah.
But, I mean, I'll bet, yeah, you have it. You just not remem... You don't use it enough.
I just didn't look far enough down my scale, but, yeah, we'll get that.
Switch computer programs and things.
Okay.
So that I don't forget to do that.
Is it, oh, it's probably at the bottom. It's probably the last one I did. I'm guessing.
Yep. You're a big answer.
Yeah, it wouldn't go in that folder anyway.
We do have it set up.
Oh, good, great.
So, I changed it on the PO.
Okay, great.
Max, I just wasn't looking in the right spot.
Okay.
But now we know.
Well, I asked about it, so you can verify that I did.
He did.
That'll be better anyway than coming out of a contingent.
Yeah.
Whose office are they working in today? Yours? Fine, fine, fine.
Are they doing the windows? Do you have sticky fly caps?
I'll tell you that there was plenty that I haven't seen of the others.
You probably didn't have it, 'cause I had just gone and bought some and, you know, kinda handed a few out when they were working in the professor's office and stuff, but then... We went through that first. I only bought one little package of them, so I need to go back and get some more, I think.
I bought one of them salt guns at Atwood's. Have you seen them?
Uh-uh.
It's a salt gun. It'll shoot a fly. If you got a fly there, you can shoot it, and it uses house table salt. Yep, sure does. It's kinda fun.
It's like a hayball for flies.
What about the mess you gotta clean up?
You don't have to clean up no mess.
They disintegrate.
It just, it's just a little bitty burst of salt, which I know, you're putting salt out there, but if you vacuum clean or whatever, you'll get it, you know. I had to shoot myself just to see how that...
Does it hurt?
It's done.
You just said that on camera.
I know. It's all right. I did. I just wanted to see, now if you're, you oughta be careful shooting if, like there's a fly right there, you know, be careful about that.
Let's see. None of you guys want to pay that one?
Oh, I guess not. I guess not. How come you didn't sign it?
I'm a little nervous. You guys didn't sign it, maybe I better not.
Hey, I, I put the sticky note on there.
Yeah, I can only do one thing on a PO.
Yeah. That's absolutely it. Two things is just entirely too much. Max was busy shooting himself.
Yeah.
Clarify though.
It tells you in the instructions, get you a piece of tin foil and hang, hang it, hold it up away from ya, and shoot it, and I did, to see the pattern, you know, that it-
Yeah.
It'll dent that tin foil out there pretty good, and if you get within, closer than this, it'll poke a hole through it, through that tin foil, or salt.
I would've never had to buy a fly swatter if I'd have given three boys a salt gun.
Hey, Mom, I'm ready to- You've been buying salt every day, though.
You'd come home and you'd open your door, and the salt would pour out from it.
So, we do have a contract on that one, right, because that says that annual contract renewal.
It says annual licensing.
Oh, licensing, yeah, okay.
No, it's, it's all right, it's fine, you can kill Mars real quick. Yeah, I suppose, a lot of times it doesn't kill 'em completely, but-
So, then you have to- He made your legs off?
No, you step on him. You can get him with a fly swatter then.
Seasons his meal with it.
Yeah.
Max invited you over for dinner for steak dinner, and you look at the steak, and it's got dents all in it, and it's covered in salt.
Well, I talked to one person, and he said, yeah, I bought one of them for my son, and that's how he salts his food, yeah. He'd salt, okay.
I need to kill a fly, get the salt and shake her.
I don't think you'd get much salt on there, though, because- Hmm? Atwoods, yes, thirty-nine dollars.
Oh, my God.
They were seventy-nine when they first come out. I wasn't giving seventy-nine for no salt gun.
They'll give thirty-nine.
Yeah, I know. But it's been more fun amusement than- Okay.
Oh, if you're done, I'm gonna move to approve purchase orders and travel claims.
I'll second that motion.
Wrong, moved, Hess seconded to approve the payment of purchase orders and travel claims. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously, sorry.
I make a motion to approve blanket purchase orders.
Second.
Hess moved, wrong, seconded to approve blanket purchase orders. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously, and you can call, um, Alex. Hello, P.O.'s all ready. Thank you, bye-bye. All right, um, twenty-eighteen ninety-six is Declaration of Surplus for Telephone C two-two-one dash oh-four from the Treasurer's Office. We have a motion to surplus that.
So moved.
Second.
Wrong, moved, Hess seconded to surplus the twenty-eighteen nine dash ninety-six Telephone Invoice Inventory C two-two-one dash oh-four from the Treasurer's Office. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong. Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Uh, we have a Resolution twenty-eighteen dash ninety-seven to dispose of equipment, telephone C, C, C two-two-one dash oh-four from the Treasurer's Office to the Election Board. Do we have a motion to approve?
I shall move, second.
Hess moved, wrong, seconded to approve the transfer of the telephone from the Treasurer's Office to the Election Board. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. We didn't make sure that goes on her inventory. Let's see, wait a minute, did-
Penny sign.
Yeah, gotcha, that's right, got it, got it. We have a phone fax quote, twenty, uh, twenty dash twenty-eighteen for Grand County, for the Grand County Expo Center in Pond Creek. Would we receive it?
We didn't receive any, so-
No bids? All right, designation of receiving officers for Pond Creek Ambulance, Jake Lynn and Kimber Elson.
I make a motion to approve them two.
Second.
Hess moved, wrong, seconded to approve Jake Lynn and Kimber An- Elson as, uh, receiving officers for the Pond Creek Ambulance. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. How many, uh, let's see, did they take anybody off, were they?
Well, I talked to Jenna about that this morning, and they did, they weren't for sure who they wanted to take off. There was Linda somebody, and I told them we need to get the dip, because they've got too many receiving officers on the street.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I'll make sure we'll get some of them off.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, we checked on that this morning, so.
Acknowledged letter confirming the four thousand five hundred dollar credit to Bank of America account for Grand County P. Card fraudulent transactions on Paul Matthew Co- Card. Paul used his credit card one time to get his notary stamp, and it somehow got-
That's showing the credit, below, here's, here's the transaction behind, right there.
It was from, yeah, eighteen hundred and twenty-seven hundred dollars, it was at a, a hotel or something, M.C. Swain. A higher regency, at a higher regency, so.
So, then we got this, and I did talk, uh, I called back to the city, and Alan's on vacation this week, which I had talked to Alan about filing the police report, and then I talked to Steven again this morning, and he said, well, he's been instructed that it has to be done. Well, Alan was, thought was, Bank of America's not in Medford's-
But our card is.
But our card is, yeah.
But our card is.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, we've got to have follow-through with that.
Right, and so I called back up again, he's on vacation, I called Dia, asked her to send someone up to file a police report, she was gonna, they were still sleeping, I said, well, I'll call after the meeting and have someone come up, so I'll get the police report.
I would, I would like to see the, just to table this for now, until we get all the paperwork and acknowledge it all at once.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, to table.
Okay, so, uh-
Bobbit moved, Hess seconded to table till we get all the, uh, final documentation on that. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously, Lamont Fire Department Project Change Order. Did you finally get a-
Well, I got, I got that, Henry finally, well, and he emailed me back and said he's waiting on the pricing for the plumbing contract, but he cannot finalize the change order.
Okay.
No hurry on our end, as it has no effect on project scheduling at this time. I will, however, try to be finalized by next week.
Okay, got you, okay. See, here was the deal, this was, yeah, this was Change Order Three, where we was talking about the bathrooms, I met with them and their, their committee, and they agreed they wanna put the bathroom in, but they are still gonna downsize the hot water tank. They, they were, it was a commercial hot water tank, they're gonna go to an on-demand hot water tank that's gonna save them quite a bit of money. But when we didn't, we tabled this one, but we voted on the ones following it, and that has, that changes the numbers on the revised contract.
Oh, I see what you're getting at.
On each one that follows, so I think what he was suggesting was that he'll, they'll void three, add six, and then we'll just go in here and mark these out and change the dollar.
Okay, so, so do you want me to have on, like, the next agenda, or whenever he gets, whatever?
He should get all the paperwork for it all, but I'm going to hand it all back to you with my notes of my meeting.
Okay, all right.
And then you've got it, so we will take no, no action until they send us the proper, proper-
The waiting, uh, proper paperwork.
Waiting, proper paperwork. That's proper paperwork, say that three times, yeah, say that all the time.
From Hembree.
Yeah.
In Hodgston, okay. Oh, do you wanna help us up and clarify on the indigent thing, too?
Oh, um, yes, on item B, on the indigent citizen, we need the official record to show that the family of Daniel Martin Smith will take, uh, uh, will claim the remains, and they will take care of the, um, burial or-
I told them that they was responsible, we, we would pay for the cremation, but they were responsible for picking up and going forward from there.
Okay, so let the records show that.
Okay.
Um, item K, First Net Update and Possible Action on Obtaining the Service, we need-
Give me a run again.
Yeah. You're gonna leave this meeting out, oh, you guys have executive session, I thought.
That won't take thirty seconds.
Hello, Brandon, how are you today? We are on K, yeah, come over here to the hotspot.
First net.
First net, um, your phone.
Okay, for the first net. I went and drove to county with the First Net phone, and checked the coverage areas and whatnot, compared them to Pioneer, made a little map here. These, the areas in pink are where there's pretty much no First Net service right now, no AT&T service. I went from corner to corner everywhere, pretty much in the county. Um, the only places that we didn't have service was up here by Manchester, across the highway, once you cross the highway over there, all the way down to Highway eleven. And then up here in the very far corner where that bridge is that crosses way up there, and then right up here by, by Renfro, for about a mile section.
You know, that Renfro area has always been real iffy, and, uh-
Yes, but it's, up here, we had some issues with Pioneer as well.
Right.
Up here and over here, so, but other than that, everywhere else in the county, it worked, it worked good. Um, we went down Salt Fork by your house, and it worked down there, so I made phone calls, pretty much everywhere we went, uh, went with Deputy, um, Lindell, and he was there with me to, so we could make phone calls and verify that it was all working, so. That's, that's where we're not having service areas, but those will be resolved, you know, eventually.
So, I know this, talking about Manchester, Max, in your area, what, what was the timeline, that thought, a year, what was they thinking on that?
It was in, it was in the next year, we should have service up there, at least three G service up by Manchester.
So, what happens when you're up, so you're, i- if we were to change over to them, and you're up there, and Manchester has their fair share of emergencies?
Yeah.
What happens when you're up there? You have no cell service?
In this area right here, we'll have any cell service, um, for right now, that's where we're at in that area right there.
Right now, with your Pioneer phone, do you have cell service there?
Here I do.
You do?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think up at the bridge we do.
Up here I don't, up here, it's really spotty, um, there's a few places down in here that it was kinda spotty.
Yeah, you get down almost, like, straight north of Hillsdale, on the county line, and it's, it's pretty spotty there.
Yeah, it was really spotty, but AT&T worked down there, so that's what I'm saying, there's trade-offs, there's dead spots for both services in both areas. Um, my main push, a lot of my main push on this is, for one, local fire department guys, and for two, our police departments, so like Medford Police Department, they have to use their own phones and their own hotspots in their vehicles. Um, if we swap over, at least give, my phone switched over to First Net, Medford, their police department guys can swap over to First Net on their personal phones, and it'll save them money and give them unlimited data.
You explain to me, you might tell Cindy and Pat, that until we sign up, nobody else in the county is eligible.
Yes, until we get our basic account set up, nobody else in the county can get, can get the First Net service.
Let me ask you this, go back to the hotspot, now, with that phone, do you need a hot, because like, right now, you've got a hotspot.
You, I have a separate device.
Right, right, so-
With the First Net, you don't need a separate device, you just use your phone.
Your phone becomes hotspot, so, so what I was getting at, so a hot, keeping a hotspot wouldn't help you in those areas?
In these areas?
If you kept a hot-
If I kept a hotspot, I could, I could do hotspot calling if I kept my Pioneer hotspot.
And how much is that a month?
Twenty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Well, would it be a trade-off that you kept the hotspot, so when you were in that area, you would have access? Would that be a possibility?
Yeah, and you could, and you could still text off your own hotspot anyway.
Yeah, yeah, you can still-
You just couldn't make telephone calls.
You just can't.
You just couldn't get out with telephone calls.
With a hotspot?
With a hotspot, I can do-
With a hotspot, yeah, you can still text.
With AT&T, you can, you can still text and make phone calls and use everything with AT&T, but she's asking those, if I kept my Pioneer.
Oh, gotcha.
Yes.
You can do Wi-Fi calling if you have internet, yes.
Well, I was gonna say, if you're on the First Net and you have your hotspot and the phone service isn't working there, can you not go through, like, the Facebook Messenger and call out? Because that's through the internet, internet hotspot.
We were just talking about that.
The hotspot, yeah, would the hotspot allow him to call out?
I think that would be good to keep it until they get-
Maybe just for a year.
-these areas taken care of, you know, but at least we could get the phone switched over and start letting the individual entities in the county have that opportunity to swap over, but we just can't do it until we have a basic count.
So, when we do that, you can keep your number, though, that phone you've got, though, port over to your number, okay?
Number won't change.
No.
Um, like I said, it's no contract, so.
We can stop it tomorrow if you want to.
Yeah, if we get it, and then you guys decide, you know, we don't wanna do this anymore, they'll stop it.
But how's that gonna affect all those other people?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, we gotta be, yeah, we don't, yeah, okay, if we get it, and then we decided, for you, it doesn't work, I, I don't see why it wouldn't, but, but let's say, we decide it doesn't-
We would have to keep that basic count.
That's okay, that's what I meant, okay, so, but for them, but it would, it would be a benefit to the other people in our county.
Sure, sure.
That's where I'm coming from, it's, it'd be a benefit for, especially our fire department guys, who, all of them are volunteering, use their own cell phones. Pond Creek Fire Department, or Pond Creek Police Department, are, they were about to go to their board to ask for-
Phones.
Hotspots and things like that, um, because they're on Pioneer right now. I talked to their police chief, and he wants to swap, swap over to First Net if he can. Medford Police Department would like to get on that, their fire depart, their, um, police department guys, because it would help them and save them money. Plus, they were about to take it to their board to ask for hotspots and things for that, and if we can swap more to First Net, they don't have to do that.
It just makes more sense.
So, I just think it makes more sense, it works a little bit better, especially the features actually work, like the mobile hotspot, you can actually still do things on your phone while you're talking on the phone, as opposed to Pioneer where you can't. Um, but there is a trade-off, like I said, there's some spots that we have Pioneer service that we're still not gonna have the First Net service just yet. But we still have parts in the county that don't have great Pioneer service as well, so it's kind of a trade-off.
It's mainly in your area, I mean, I've got a little bit, but it's mainly in your area, what's your input?
Well, I don't wanna hold anybody else up, other departments or whatever and stuff, they seem to be targeting that they're going to get more coverage out there in the future.
They're, they're supposed to be putting a new tower up here within the next twelve months, so.
And if we sign on, we might be able to gig them all a bit, and-
Yeah.
Because didn't you say that, because I thought, he said when he originally presented it, that, didn't they tell you?
We told them any dead spots in the county, let them know, and they would, they would work it.
They said it would be resolved at a certain time frame.
Well, that sounds good.
So, I, I think let's go ahead and go forward with it.
Yeah, all right, is that a motion?
I move to, okay, if Max did, I'll second it.
I'll make a motion, and-
Okay, Hess moved, wrong, seconded to move forward with the First Net update to obtain the service for the county, and, um, then, once you do that, then you can reach out to the other entities, and that would also work within, like, for commissioners, because we're first responders, okay. All right, awesome, all righty, uh, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Quarter report from the E.M. Brandon, those.
Yes, uh, Max talked to me last week and asked, well, I hadn't done one, and I just hadn't, hadn't thought about it in a while, so I have a report here for you guys.
Okay.
This is just pretty much the main, the main things I've been working on, I didn't get too crazy into detail. So, uh, I've met with One Oak, um, specifically to talk about their donation, where they paid for Swift number one, because they hadn't done that yet this year. Um, what happened was they had a new plant manager. What happened was they had a new plant manager and he didn't know that they'd been doing that. So, I'm having to go through and do a new application. So, that is in the process, I'm working on that. So, that's why we hadn't received any money from them. Uh, we did get our DEQ grant money in, thousand dollars that goes to LEPC for our Tier Two agreement. That came in last week. Our hazard mitigation plan NOI has been approved. That is just the NOI, that is not the grant itself. So, our NOIs got approved. I met with NODA Patty and also spoke with Matt Rollins last week. And we're beginning the application process. So, that's part of what's next on the agenda here today is some agreements we have to do for the application process. So, that is in the works. So, as soon as we can get the application approved, we'll get started, but it is being worked on. I'm working on an updated emergency personnel contact list for the county, specifically fire department chiefs, EMs for each city and police department chiefs.
Did you find out who the fire chief was at Nash?
Yes, I did.
Who is it?
It's, I have it wrote down on my.
Yeah.
On my desk. I can't remember what it is.
That's all right.
But it's on my desk if you guys wanna, wanna see. I went, met with Nash to get all their contact information. And I found out they only have actually ten fire department people on their fire department right now. That's it right now. And they only have, I think, six active. Four of them are not active right now, so they're really low in numbers right now.
Okay.
So, I'm hoping that, especially with the First Net thing, that might provide a little bit more incentive for people to sign up for the fire department. So, you know, just looking for ways to bring more people to volunteer at their fire departments.
How many people, Max, do you have to have when you roll out? Just two?
Yeah, we're supposed to never go out with less than two per truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know what they've got in trucks, but.
So, I just, I just knew that was really low. They've had four people quit recently due to Corey Shrewsbury retired. And they had a dispute and some people quit, so.
Oh.
Yeah, and they had a guy or two move away.
Yeah, so, but we're working on, I'm working with them trying to get some more people sign up to volunteer, so. I've ordered a new computer scanner monitor label maker for the clerk's office and got that installed and running for them. I've attended the Northwest EM workshop. I did run and was elected for alternate vice president for Northwest Oklahoma Emergency Management Agency. I met with Pat King from Homeland Security, where he helped me complete all of our NIMs compliance paperwork for this year. So, all of our NIMs compliance stuff is done. I mailed out all our Tier Two invoices and sent those out. We only have a few people that have not paid, so I'm gonna be doing those second mailings this month. This is the most payments we have ever received whenever we've done our Tier Two filings. Normally, we have like twenty or twenty-five that don't pay. This year, I think I'll have six so far. So, that is in the works. I am gonna be bringing something to the board next week about our Tier Two filing. I'm hoping, trying to get our filing fees changed to a flat fee as opposed to a tiered fee. So, that's gonna be on the agenda for next week. Working on quotes and ordering new computer equipment for the different districts. And so, for Pat, working on, you know, well, I've already ordered yours.
Yeah.
You know, I've got quotes going for Max and for the assessor. We're looking into monitors and things like that. So, that, all stuff I've been working on. Like I said, went out and checked First Net, which you guys know that. I am in the process of updating our EOP. Our EOP was badly out of date, so that's one of the reasons we're doing the emergency contact list. Cause all that information has to be in our EOP, so I'm working on getting that updated. I've got trainings coming up, which is my NIMs refreshers, my, okay, first refresher, LEPC training and CPR instructor class that I have to take. Working on my budget estimate of needs, which will be done today probably. So far this year for safety, we've had five safety incidents in the county. Only two of those required workers comp claims. Those safety incidents have been slip, uh, two slip and falls, one poison ivy, one lifting incident and two vehicle. Two vehicle accidents. Not major accidents, but vehicle accidents.
Two slip and trips, one poison ivy, two vehicles and one what?
And vehicle, vehicle accident.
Two vehicles.
Oh, two vehicle accidents.
One lifting, one poison ivy and two slip and falls.
Yeah. So, that's what we've been doing recently. The slip and fall, one of them wasn't major. It was just a slip and fall. I did an incident report. We talked about what happened, what not to do in the future, so that wasn't a big deal. The lifting one did cause a workers comp claim, caused a hernia. And poison ivy caused workers comp claim, because they got poison ivy. So, just make sure you tell your guys to beware of poison ivy out there.
You know, we.
And I knew you guys did that.
We do that, that stuff we order preseason and they take it if they're really allergic to it and it's.
I didn't know if any of the other districts knew about that.
But it's been, it works great, especially for people that are really, those that are very mildly sensitive, they will not get it. Those people that are highly sensitive to, if they get it, it'll be a very, very mild case. It has been great.
So, Tracy Nail, our Northwest Regional Coordinator for Emergency Management State of Oklahoma. She's leaving and going to the Health Department, so her last day is the first of the month. Si Howenstein from Roger Mills County is also retiring. And Blaine County, their director retired, and Jim Shelton is gonna be their new director. Upcoming events, I've got my Northwest Emergency Management meeting tomorrow at Woodward. ACO Summer Safety Conference is August first through the third. OEM Conference is August thirteenth through the sixteenth. We have an LEPC workshop in Alva on the twenty-seventh. We will be having Earth, Wind and Fire November the fifteenth. And I did have a question for you guys. Is that something that we wanted to do like we did last year and participate in again? They're giving us the option this year to do our own like we did last year or do it with the region. So, they're doing like a big region one and then they're letting people split off if they wanna do their own.
Well, didn't we do ours with Garfield County?
No.
Like, no, we did our own last year, but we had a, a health department lady come.
Oh, that's right, that's right, down at my shop, that's right, that's right.
It was very informative too, I liked it.
I liked it. I, I think we oughta do it our own. I thought it worked out good.
They called me and asked me last week if we wanted to do our own again this year, and I told them I was gonna bring it up to you guys and then I let them know. So, if that's something you wanna do, then we will go ahead and do that again this year. So, I will let them know on that and we'll do that.
What do you guys think? Do you wanna participate in it? We had it at my shop and Cindy, you were there. We had, uh, we had a, we had, I think, almost every, yeah. We pretended we had earthquakes and different things.
And they're, they're giving us, they're giving us all the injects like they did last year. So, pretty much they just need from me who's gonna be attending and who's gonna be participating. That way they can write our specific injects for the exercise. So, I'll be sending out an email then to get attendance, so I don't know how many of you guys are gonna attend.
I wanna do it again.
I, I would do it. We can have it at my shop again.
Okay, that works for me and I'll let our local people know so we can get them involved. And I think that One Oak will be attending this year. I talked to Jason Lyons and he said that if we do do that, that he'd probably come and attend.
Well, that new guy did attend from One Oak last year. The one that didn't was the city of Medford. We had.
That's true.
Yeah, we didn't have, the city of Medford didn't, but at One Oak, he was a new guy.
Their police chief was in the process of retiring.
Yeah, something, yeah.
He didn't want to approve.
He did not wanna come in on his day off, yeah. So, that's why he didn't come. But we will have participation from Medford this year.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'm already talking to them.
Yeah.
So, and then I have days off that I'm trying to get scheduled for the twenty-fifth of July. I have to take my grandmother to a doctor appointment as well as on the ninth of August. And then on August the twentieth, twentieth, we have our Cherokee Nation meeting in Oklahoma City. I'm gonna be going back as long as that's okay.
I think that, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, that's all I have for you guys. Do you have some questions about anything, just a minute?
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, next item is the Grant County Multi Juror Edition Hazardous Mitigation Plan Share of Cost Commitment Letter Assurance Non-Construction Program Form 424B.
Yes, and that is right there. And on that, we just need the chairman's signature, but I wanted to bring it to the board so I can let everyone know. On some of those I can sign and some of those we have to have the chairman of the board sign.
So, on this, uh, we're committed to the ten thousand nine hundred thirty, ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents of the forty-three thousand seven hundred fifty, and that's in kind.
That's in kind, yes.
I think.
I move to approve, second.
Okay, Ron moved.
They just want to make sure that we're agreeing to that amount.
To the, uh.
For the application.
For the cost share of the commitment letter in the amount of.
Want them sent as separate motions or?
Uh, no, we can do them as one.
Yeah.
Uh, and the, uh, the letter and for the assurance of non-construction program form 424B. Now, did we have Stephen look at this?
That is a standard FEMA form that cannot be changed. So, I can send it to him, but we can't change it.
Well.
Cause if we change it, FEMA won't approve it.
Yeah, I got you. It, but I think we just to cover our, you know what, we just, it, and he can, I mean, even if he doesn't approve it, we can still approve it.
Okay, that's what I didn't know. That's why, I didn't know if I needed to send it to him, but I was like, if he doesn't approve, if he doesn't want to change it, we can't change it.
Says to me that he's not approving.
No, just the form, no, no, no.
That it's illegal.
Form, yeah. As to form only, that's all he's doing. As to form only.
And that's my fault, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We'll, we'll send it up to him, so, all, okay, uh, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor?
No. I'm, I'm sorry.
Aye.
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 All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Sorry, now I'm going.
Okay, I did have one other form that I had on there. I took off the agenda, but I called Matt and he said we still need to sign it.
We need to put it back on.
Do I need to put this back on the agenda?
On next week's agenda.
I have to have this one signed as well. This is our last FEMA grant application, so this will have to come on the agenda, so we'll stick them together for next year.
Yeah, we're, we're having a meeting next week, so.
That's perfectly fine. I just wanted to let you guys know.
Thank you.
I just didn't think we needed to, because it says I completed it on submission, but he said he still wants us to sign it, just to have it in, in hand ready.
Got you. All righty, that will work. All right, thank you very much, Brandon.
No, not a problem.
This is an acknowledge the Community Development Support Association's, and then Pat sits on this board regarding the Rural Housing Preservation Grant through the USDA Rural Development for Grant Garfield Counties. Do you have anything you wanna tell us about that?
This is new to me too. I'm certain that's an annual deal that they apply for that grant.
Okay, so, are we all good with that?
Does it so acknowledge?
Acknowledge it, so acknowledge that and tell them thank you very much. And I think that they put that in the, I think they advertised that in the paper and then people can apply for it, I think is how that works.
They do that though?
I think, but you better, I'm ninety percent sure, do you remember? I'm pretty sure that they, they handle it on their end, but you might double check with them on what role we need to, to do.
Yeah, cause they're not requesting us to do one thing.
I think it's just, I think it's just that, so, okay.
They act now, not later.
Thank you.
I think so. Uh, do we have any road crossing permits?
No.
None? I see Kingfisher County's in a, quite a time with their road crossing permits. I saw that in the paper.
That's a, uh, I think those are gonna start going by the wayside, it sounds like.
Yeah, new business. Cindy, do we have any new business?
No.
I have one thing for you guys.
Okay.
I got a phone call this week from a Susie Breaker, used to be a Tebow. And she had a call, she had a complaint about the Historical Society part of the website, saying that it's never been updated. And she wouldn't like someone to contact her and talk to her about the Historical Society part of the website. Because she said it says, you click for more information, but nothing's ever there.
Well, okay, I'll, I'll handle that.
I would let you guys know and you would call her. So, that was all that was.
Okay, I will handle, I will make the call. Thank you.
Didn't know who did the Historical Society stuff.
I don't, that's not a county function, but I will talk to her and I will get a whole, I've, I've, it seems like I've talked to her before, but I'm not positive. But I, I've talked to someone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thanks.
Uh, Max, do you have any new business?
No.
Pat, do you have any new business?
I have none.
I have none. Commissioner?
An update to Buddy Carroll was here on Thursday and Friday. He did contact me this morning. And we are, I am balanced with him. We have one, I think, money movement to make in addition to what I've already done. And that was for general, and it's twenty bucks. So, with twenty extra dollars. But he is gonna have to get with Cindy on her account summary and her warrants, but other than that, we're in good shape.
Thank you.
That's excellent.
Okay, um, Max, what do you have?
You know, we had a, uh, some rain up there and we're, we're, we're fighting the Johnson grass. It's growing faster than we can mow it off or spray it, but we're working on that. They started today doing my crack seal on Trenton Road. We went out and sprayed it last week at the beginning of the week and we went out. They showed up Thursday and Friday and blowed the cracks out and got prepared for today. And they were down there starting today on the, the crack seal. Had one of my Mack trucks broke down, carrier bearing went out of it. We got it hauled to the shop this morning. We don't know for sure what it's gonna take to get it fixed, but business as usual after that. Do not have a NODA meeting this week. They're gonna skip July, so won't be going down to that. And that's all.
District three kept getting two and three tenths rains every day last week too, which is great. But it's, it kinda makes it hard to get much done. We're still kinda business as usual, mowing, grading, all that. We did get a bed put on, bedding hoist put on one of our trucks last week in Little Rock, Arkansas. So, I had a guy going for a couple of days doing that. That's, that's really about it.
Well, last week I returned home from my National Association of Counties Conference and it, it was one of the largest ones. We had, we had over three thousand people registered, pre-registered. We had an additional four hundred register onsite and we had six hundred first time attendees. Our conferences just cover about anything and everything. And there is several of those that you can find. They're workshops online. So, go to naco.org and you can go to their annual conferences and there, be logged there. There are a lot of good workshops on there. Last week I also had a meeting with Wheatland RCND, my financial meeting. And then I met with Friday down at ACO with the Advisory Board for the County Training Program. And we are updating our county training program, and I know NODA's already met with the treasurers and the assessors. And we're trying to get everybody online to, to kinda doing the same thing. Sixty-three hours to begin with. The good news is, I've got copies here for everybody. The good news is, is that they're gonna also allow their, each organization to use some of their own training to count on discretionary hours. So, if you go to a COTA conference and they have something specific to treasurers or to clerks, you know, and if you work with, with them, they're gonna allow you to use it. For us, if we have something at our ACO conferences that they're gonna allow us to use that for some training or our, our LTAP classes that we're using to, to do that. Originally, I, I, I know a lot of the other associations have never done the accreditation part. You have and you haven't. But we asked that they keep our accreditation. In other words, you can go to class and they're, you, you know, but we're asking them to still keep the accreditation so that you can take home a test. Because if I send people, I wanna make sure that they go to the class and they learn something. I mean, if, if they make you.
It makes sense in the mind, yeah.
If you make it stay in there, so it, it is really good. I just think it's, on there, it shows you what the clerks, the treasurers, commissioners, sheriff, even the sheriffs were on board. And the, the commissioners are the only one that have our basic and advanced one and advanced two. I think everybody else is just basic. But we're going to keep our advanced one and our advanced two, adding some stuff like exercise board to our requirements and some different things. I, I just think it's gonna be a win-win situation for everyone on that, so.
Are they gonna kinda get to where they're doing more webinar stuff, where you don't have to take a tour of Oklahoma?
Yes, that, that is one of the things. They're going to do a lot more online training. Yes, that, that is one of the things. They're going to do a lot more online training and stuff that, that, that you can do. So that they're gonna do that, so more people can participate in that.
Cause sometimes a one-day class can take up two days.
Or three. Yeah, that's right. And they, some of them, they've changed, like they've taken purchasing and they've made it into really two classes. So purchasing, uh, somebody might not, not need to know all the nitty-gritty about purchasing. You need to know the basics of what it is. Whereas yours, you need to know account numbering and they're gonna get more into the actual doing it and going over a purchase.
They need to have like interim, like basic and then like an interim and then, yeah.
So we're gonna have two, we're gonna split that into two deals. Same thing on budgeting. We're gonna split that class into do, to two. So you have the basic concepts and then the one that where you really get into digging out the numbers and why you do what you do. So there's gonna be, and that's gonna be not just for commissioners, that's kinda be everybody's. It's gonna be kinda done that way. So, um, they meet, uh, here in a couple of weeks with their board for the final approval. That's the OSU with, uh, ODOT, the health department, all their head people and they'll sign off on this. Um, in twenty nineteen, when that, what we voted on, uh, the, the CAMA bill, that's gonna go through in twenty nineteen where some of the doc fees are gonna come back and go directly to OSU for our county training program. And it's going to really help them in their financial part, cause right now they're getting a lot of feedback because it costs, you know, not only is it time for us to drive there and get hotels and meals, if you have to, can't do it online, but the cost of the, the actual training, we're getting, uh, court clerks have really been slammed on their budgets. So they're really having a hard time sending their people because they just don't have the money to do it.
Can't afford it, yeah.
So hopefully in twenty, uh, twenty twenty, maybe they'll be able to lower those fees or maybe even do away with those fees. So it's gonna be real good, good.
Did you say that commissioners require their people to take tests?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna keep that in ours, the, the, uh, the accreditation.
You, you require your people, your commissioners too?
I do. I do. Yeah, no, not everyone does. Uh, that's all, as, as you want to. I, I do. And when I send my people to those classes, I did it. I took the test when I went. And when I send my people, I require them, if they're gonna go take the class, I require them to take the test.
Yeah, that's, that's a requirement that the treasurers association is required to, for everybody, deputies and all.
Well, I didn't know that. Nody did not tell me that, so that's good to know, so. Um, this, next week, um, we have our ACCO meetings Wednesday down in Oklahoma City, our, our ACCO board. Um, Sixth F, your CED meetings, that'll all be down there on Wednesday. And then, um, let me see, then, uh, Thursday I will have the, uh, is going to be our LTAP advisory board training. You know, Mikey Hinkston has retired. They have not replaced him. Uh, Gary Snyder right now is overseeing that and they're gonna be talking about interviewing somebody to, to take Mikey's place.
Mikey?
Mm-hmm, Mikey Doug. They retired a year ago and now Mikey's retired officially.
Now Mikey.
Mikey's not there today. Now Mikey retired this month. So Mikey's out there. So Gary, uh, Snyder, you know, he was an assessor at one time, assessor, yeah, he was an assessor out at, in Payne, Noble County or Payne, Noble County. Well, anyway, he still works for him, but he's kinda helping him oversee it till they hire someone. So we're gonna go through that interview process, so we'll be meeting, uh, about that on Thursday. So also, um, the White House has been inviting every state, uh, leaders, uh, county leaders from every state to the White House to do some very intense one-on-top. Some of the states have actually got to meet with the president. Some have got to meet with the vice president. Uh, most of them have always met with some upper staff. Oklahoma has finally got our invitation.
Yes, I got one.
August twenty-first, yay. So we are on deck, on board. Um, in talking, this Brett Carter, Brett Cartel that's handling, and I know her very well. She's been very active in helping with NACO. NACO will probably be bringing in the Oklahoma leaders, uh, on the twentieth for some oversight, house cleaning. You know, what we're gonna be talking about before we go to the White House. So, um, if anybody is interested in be, getting an invitation, please let me know.
Are y'all three going?
Huh, what?
Are y'all three going?
I'm.
I'm going.
I'm, I will, yeah.
I don't, I don't know who else is going. Is, this just came out, this is brand new, just, just hit the, hit the wires at six o'clock Friday night. So, uh, I was just bringing it to you. I haven't said a word to anybody. This is my first notice to anybody. I don't know who has got, uh, invitation and who hasn't, but.
Yeah, it seemed like I just got mine over the weekend, or Friday.
Yeah.
I was gonna check it out and make sure it was legit first.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, that was one of those dudes you kinda, anyway, this is real.
Forward that to me, says, is this a real deal?
Yeah.
Is this a real thing, so?
Donald says he wants to meet you.
Yeah.
Wait a minute.
And Gene Wallace, uh, I'm working with Gene Wallace, um, we have that board meeting Wednesday and I don't know, um, if the board might decide to maybe help some counties with their travel or not. But I have found a hotel that's a couple blocks from the White House that we can get government rates at. I'm doing some checking. So if you're interested, just let me know and we can see about that. So that's, that's gonna be exciting for, for us, I think, as counties, you know, it's, uh, and mainly rural counties. Also, I was gonna tell you at my, uh, NACO conference, I did get to meet with Federal Highway on this two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollar grant that is only for rural counties. There's only twenty-six states that qualify. Oklahoma is one. I, uh, they have not sent us out the, how it's going to be done, but if you say, let's say they divided it equally, which I don't think it's gonna be divided equally. If you have twenty-six states and you have two-hundred-and-twenty-five million, that's about ten million apiece. So, you know, uh, they're gonna be looking for more probably regional deals. I'm going to try to get with Randy on Wednesday and see if we wanna try to do regional things such as, um, you know, working through our CEDs, looking at our SERB things that we already have out there. I don't know, I'm gonna talk to him. I'm also, Mike Patterson reached out to me. I'm going to be on his Oklahoma, driving Oklahoma work task. And we're going to start meeting the first Thursday of every month, starting in, in August. And so all of these grant applications are at the will of ODOT. They oversee them. So I'm going to work with him. I'm hoping, we don't know, but see, ODOT may be able to be the ones that actually apply for that on their state highways in rural counties. So I want to make sure that this money is actually put down into the counties and not on the state highway department.
Okay.
So that, that'll be something that we'll have to, as counties, work to try to make sure it comes down to our county level, so. Those are the main things I have going on. Um, those are my comments. So I guess that brings us down to item number ten. We need to probably call Stephen.
We're just.
Hi Stephen, it's Cindy. Should we record it?
Last week's and press play again. It's gonna take about two minutes.
Oh.
Cause, isn't it the same thing?
Same thing, different day, different person.
You wanna, uh, I make a motion that we enter into, so she can record that and then we can shut that off.
Okay, got you.
I make a motion that we enter into executive session.
Second.
Hes move, wrong seconds, to enter into executive session to discuss the complaint of erroneous assessment by Rock Falls Wind Farm, um, against Grant County. On the favor?
Bob it.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. We will be in executive session. Please turn off the mics and the recording.
There, there we go.
There we go.